It is February the ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. This is a special session, and we will move into an executive session and then go to our customary work session. So with that, I would ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Yes, Mayor. Council members, Steve Bremner, Judith Chandler,
Present.
John Shada.
Here.
Susan Woolbrook.
Here.
Julie Wolfe.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nancy Fortune.
Present.
And Mayor John Graham.
Here. Thank you. Okay, I trust everyone has had seen a copy of the agenda, so I'd asked for a motion to approve the agenda.
I approve the agenda as printed. I'll second that.
Chandler, all in favor, say aye. Raise your hand. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so we will move into an executive session. This is an, this will be an executive session for legal advice pursuant to section five point one C of the City of Manitou Springs Home Rule Charter concerning Cushionberry versus City of Manitou Springs, case number twenty-one, CV zero zero two zero eight, D Colorado, two thousand and twenty-one. And with that, we will need to exit this Zoom session and click on the second link that the city clerk sent. Is that correct, Judy?
Yes, after there's a motion and a vote on the going into executive session, then well, that will be the link that you go into as the executive session link I sent out earlier today.
Good point. Thank you. Yes, and as she said, yes, I, we do need a motion to second.
I'll move. We move into executive session as you just stated. Second.
All right, okay, all right. Thank you. Motion passed unanimously. We'll move into executive session. So if we'll go, if you could all go ahead and exit this Zoom session and click on the, the second one, that would be great.
You want me to send it again? She's got it.
Okay. All right, it looks like we have have everybody back that we need. Okay, so.
I think we're missing the associate from my office.
Well, that's, that's right, yeah. Is it Ellie? Is it?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Judy, can we bring Ellie in? She's out there. I see her in the, in as an attendee.
She has a.
It's Elizabeth Lubin, sorry.
Yeah, she's got her hand raised, so.
That's where she went. So to the top. Okay.
Okay, great. So I'll just call this work session to order again, now February the ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, and we need to do a quick roll call. So Judy, if you do that, please.
Yes. So, council member Steve Bremner.
Here.
Judith Chandler.
Present.
John Shada.
Here.
Susan Woolbrook.
Here.
Julie Wolfe.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nancy Fortune.
Present.
Mayor John Graham.
Here. Thank you.
Mayor, just for the record, do you mind if I make a quick statement?
Please go ahead.
Well, thank you. So we, we actually have adjourned from the executive session. I think it was about six twenty-two when we adjourned, and we did adjourn the actual special meeting, of which the executive session was a, was a part of, correct?
Okay, correct, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Yes. A good point, thank you. Excellent. Mr. Parker, the first discussion item is discussion of the draft of a drone ordinance. Mr. Parker, you have the floor.
Appreciate that. Just to my notes here really quickly. So, a few months ago, my office was asked to take a look at providing a draft ordinance that would regulate the use of drones within the city. And we didn't have a ton of other expressed direction as to exactly how the city wanted to regulate drones. So what we did was we put together an ordinance that basically, we believe, covers most of the authority that a local government in the United States has to regulate drone use within their jurisdiction because the federal, federal law makes it pretty clear that the FAA as delegated authority by the US government has broad authority to regulate aircraft and airspace, including drone use. And so the FAA right now has adopted certain regulations that regulate the commercial use of drones in the entire US, and they also, the law also is that the city cannot enact other drone regulations that would interfere with the FAA's broad authority to regulate aircraft and airspace. So what the courts have held, there haven't been a lot of court cases. There's been really one major court case out of Massachusetts that provided some guidance, but not a lot. But generally, the courts and the FAA itself have held and indicated in guidance documents that local government like the city can regulate drone use in matters that are traditionally regulated by local governments. And so that would include things like zoning issues, land use issues, like public, use of public property, privacy type regulations to protect residents' privacy. So in the current ordinance, we basically have tried to provide regulations that, at least to the extent that we believe is authorized for the city to regulate drone use in the city. And I'm, just need to pull this up really quickly because I just haven't gotten there yet. Here it is. So if you look at the, the draft ordinance, sort of the main prohibitions and I guess regulations on drone use are in what's, what's listed as section six point eight, five point zero three zero, operating prohibitions. And so these are the types of regulations that we think the city still has authority, given the broad authority of the FAA over drones, and includes things like flying drones over people's property that interferes with their use and enjoyment of the property. You can't equip drones with any type of deadly weapons, should go without saying, but you know, you never know. You can't operate them in a way that interferes with other aircrafts. You can't operate them negligently or recklessly, because some of these are pretty small, but regardless, they have the, they have the potential to hurt people or damage property if they crash or are used in a negligent or reckless manner. Also, we've provided a provision that says you cannot launch or land them from city property unless you have a permit. So this would basically prevent people from flying drones around your public parks, landing them in your public parks, that kind of thing. And you can issue a permit that would allow it to occur there, and it gives a preference for like educational purposes. You know, drones have a lot of uses that, you know, students could, could be using in teaching environments. So it just allows the city to control how they're flown from and, from and to city property. It also prohibits them from being used to conduct surveillance type stuff. So you have to, unless there's a court order allowing it. So that would normally be the law anyways for your police department, for example. They'd have to get a a warrant to use them to search people's property or whatever, but they are being used for those purposes. And also prohibits using them for, like, what people tend to voyeurism, taking photos of people in their backyard, those kinds of things, because a lot of these are equipped with video cameras and, and just still cameras. You can't use them to bother wildlife. You can't fly them over emergency response efforts. So if your fire department or your police department are involved in an emergency, you don't want drones buzzing overhead. This ordinance prevents that, but it does allow your fire department and your police department to use the drones as they think is necessary for their activities. So if they want to use drones to find somebody who's been injured up in the mountains in, in the city proper, or if they want to use drones to surveil a situation where there's been an accident or something, you know, hazardous material spill, they can use drones for those purposes. They could also use them in training exercises. So it doesn't prohibit the official use of drones by the cities, cities, departments. Let's see what else there is here. I, and then the rest of it's basically just, you can't use drones in a way that violates other laws too. So that is generally the gist of the ordinance, but we haven't received a lot of direction from, from the city, so we can make revisions, we could look into other regulations you might think are necessary based on the law. So we're happy to discuss this further with you. And just as a note, Ellie, the viewer from my office is here. She did a lot of the work on the research and on the ordinance, so I've asked her to join the conversation in case she, there's questions that I can't answer that she can.
Thanks, Mr. Parker. I think at this point, perhaps the best thing to do would be to entertain questions and comments from city council. Counselor Wolfe, I believe you've got your hand up. Counselor Wolfe.
Thank you. I have a question, either for Jeff, either attorney. When I was reading this, I read about how there can't be any surveillance of property that is considered to be property where you would have a reasonable expectation of privacy. And yet, Jeff, you were mentioning about being in your backyard. When I read the ordinance, I thought, oh, that means they can't like shine it into my bathroom window and see if they can watch me showering. But I, I didn't think that I had any expectation of privacy when I'm taking the garbage out or any time that I step outside my house. Did I miss something?
Well, yeah, that's a great question. And so I guess it would sort of depend upon your yard. I, I think if you've had a, had a yard with fencing, you know, and trees, and I guess maybe depend upon the angle of the drone, how it flies over top. If you're out sunbathing or something and there's a drone hovering over, I think you'd have an expectation of privacy in that situation. But in the front yard, taking out garbage, open to the public, probably not.
I see.
Yeah, it's a good question.
My other question is, do you think it would, you know, be a problem with violating federal law or the preemption issue if we were to have a special noise ordinance just for drones, different from the one that's referenced in your proposal? Because although my experience with drones, isn't that the decibels are that high that you'd call code enforcement and say, or the police and say, oh my God, this is so loud, you gotta come over. It's more that constant irritating low noise that just won't go away, and you have to go in the house and you don't want to garden anymore because it's like making you feel insane. At least that was my reaction. And it's almost like living next door to a chainsaw, the chainsaw factory where people are using the chainsaw to make, you know, those bear wood carvings and stuff. It's just that noise. So I wondered if, if that would be a preemption issue or that's something we could look at.
Yeah, I, I think that's another good question. And I, my, my initial answer is, is that nuisance, like noise issues are generally not preempted. So I think you could look at regulating drone noise. I guess I'd have to think about how we go about doing that. You know, it's not your typical type of noise ordinance where it's too loud or piercing. It's more like continuous. So we could certainly take a look at that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Bremner? Counselor.
Yeah, as a drone operator, I would first of all say that as far as the noise goes, the length of the noise, the battery on a drone will typically last twenty minutes maximum. So and there's means to reduce the noise. You can change the propellers, which I've done, makes, makes them not quite so noisy. And also, I'm inclined, as a drone operator, to have less regulation. I know that there's FAA regulation already, and so I don't see a need to have further regulation. And some of the nuances that, that you're trying to regulate, such as surveillance, I'm not sure how that's enforceable, because if you're flying your drone, how do you know which way it's pointing or what data it's picking up? I suppose if you're flying directly into somebody's backyard and hovering, that's one issue, but typically when you're flying a drone, you're, you're looking for cinematic shots or you know, sweeping shots of wide areas. You're not typically trying to zero in on an individual in, in their home setting. So I don't know. I'm not sure that we really need to make a regulation on that. And also, I'd like to say that I personally think it's okay to, to fly a drone from a city park. That's just my view as a drone operator. I don't see any issue with it. I do agree with the aspect of, of not flying it over somebody's property because of the danger of a crash. So but again, a lot of that is already regulated by the FAA, so I'm not sure we have a need for any further regulation. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Chandler, please.
I'm gonna swing the pendulum the other day, other way, Counselor Bremner, and say that I, I absolutely feel that we need as much regulation as we can, because there's really good drone operators and there's some that, that aren't so good as you are. I absolutely think it's critical that we have drone ordinance that protects our parks, and I also want to make sure, Jeff, that that is extending to our trails and all of our open space. Because I don't want to be on a trail hiking and out in my only serene moment and have drones hovering over. So parks and trails and all of our city-owned open space, is that what this ordinance would cover?
Yeah, I'm just trying to see the exact language right here.
I didn't, I, I didn't see that exact language.
By the city. How could, how could you prevent a drone from going over a trail? I mean, if it's way up in the sky, there might be some trails down below, and you're supposed to like find them and sue them because there was a trail underneath? I, I don't know how we would do that.
So I, I think that we have an issue with flying over versus flying from. I'm not a, I have to look at the, the, the case law again, but I think the case law that we're, we're looking at doesn't allow the city to totally prohibit flying over certain properties, but it does allow the city to control what properties, at least city-owned properties it can fly from. So we, I understand the concern, and depending how the council wants to go with it, we can look at what's the maximum extent the city could limit that. I mean, if that's what you want to do, but we certainly could prevent it, we could prevent it being flown from and landing on open space.
Right.
But over is probably going to be a problem.
Did you have more? Good. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thanks. Um, I also am an advocate of regulation for drones, recognizing that enforcement is virtually impossible in most cases. So just a couple of questions. One is, a permit would be required in certain instances, and is that, is the granting or the process for granting permits encompassed in another ordinance?
Yeah, so we didn't, I didn't want to put the details in as to how you get a permit and exactly what you have to fill out. We just basically wanted to have them, that could be reserved for city staff to put together in compliance with the ordinance.
That answers my questions. Secondly, obviously enforcement is problematic. So let me ask you this. If someone decides to enforce something, a drone that is over their property that is incredibly annoying and how is this said? Direct or interference with the use or enjoyment of that property. If that person figured out a way to destroy that drone while it was over their property, what, what trouble might they be in?
Yeah, so I mean, the fact that something's not allowed doesn't mean that citizens can just take the law into their own hands and conduct self-help, although I'm sure some people have felt the urge to shoot one out of their.
I was gonna say, we, we should have a law that says you can shoot the person, kind of like Make My Day.
Yeah. I don't shoot the drone, maybe not the person, but they have, they'd have to report it. You'd have to, you'd have to basically have some evidence of who did it, and that's standard law enforcement, so.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify because rocks work pretty well with drones too. But anyway, all right, thank you. Those were my questions.
You're welcome.
Do you have comments or questions?
Is that for me, Mayor? You cut out.
I'm sorry. Yes, I always wonder if you had any questions or comments.
No, not really. I mean, I, I think it's good that we have a little bit more time to think on this. I'm really kind of torn on this issue because I know quite a few people who are drone operators, but we're a box canyon, and in my neighborhood, especially downtown, there are quite a few drones, you know, already. Lots of my neighbors do, and they don't really, they're just having fun, but it can feel and sound and appear to be really invasive. And I know in my neighborhood, you know, that my ward goes from all the way up at the cock to Savelli's. It's pretty dense. I mean, we have a, we're really packed in, in a lot of areas and you know, it seems like we're working hard on things like 5G and trying to remain free of that. And I just feel like the, you know, more regulations on this are probably better as drones become cheaper or less expensive. I don't know. I, you know, I, I'd like some more time to think on it, but I'm, I'm leaning in the direction of more restrictions in our community about this than maybe other cities might have. Thanks.
Yeah, I know you'd express some concerns from personal experience there, so I thought that would be insightful. Mr. Shada, we haven't heard from you on this. Do you have thoughts on this?
I, I think anything, I think most of the things that are in here are pretty reasonable in terms of I think the enforcement issue is going to be, you know, a really big issue. I think some of these definitions I think are a little, I don't know, I don't know how, I don't know how if we ticketed somebody, how we would do some of these things in terms of, that's my biggest question is, you know. So that, that's the thing that I'm just troubled with in terms of, of, and I think some of these things, I think, are, in, in researching this, I believe there's already a federal law over, I don't think we need number nine as an example. I think that's already forbidden by law. Okay. So I think making it shorter, that is tuned to what our community expectations are, I think would be better.
Which one is number nine, John? What do you?
Number nine is, I believe, you know, I was looking, I was looking at the FAA things, and I believe that it is already forbidden to be flying a drone over emergency response.
Emergency response, yeah.
The, the only issue with that is you still, if, if you left took it out, you couldn't charge it in muni court. It probably would never get charged if there was an issue. This gives you the authority to enforce that, just.
Well, then I, I guess what I'm wondering is then how, then maybe what we ought to be doing is instead of specifying that, just maybe referring to the FAA prohibitions and saying that any infraction of FAA stuff can also be charged in muni court. How about that?
You probably spell it out.
Then we're not constantly having to kind of update this, because I think the federal standards on this are a huge moving target.
They, they definitely are, and that is, that is maybe a reason why you want to have what you think is a real problem for the city in your code, and then as federal regulations change, it won't matter, because we actually do have that in section twelve. So any violations of federal or state law can also be enforced by the city. But I had, this is, this was an ordinance for you to look at, and your policy is your policy. We can change anything you think's appropriate. We just wanted to give you what we thought would be kind of like the limits of your authority, so you knew what you could work with.
I, I guess my only other comment too about some of these things here in terms of number eight, intentionally or knowingly harass or annoy, and that's wildlife as well as people. It just seems like there was another one there in terms of, well, number one, how we talked about the interference or use of enjoyment of property. And I think maybe one way to, you know, I guess, I, I guess I'm just, I'm just worried about how in the world we enforce this kind of thing and bring this kind of matter to, you know, municipal court and things like that. That's, I just, it, it seems like a lot of this wording is, is, is very vague. And, and I don't know how to fix it. I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're, it's a, it's a really good point, and I, I think there's a couple of issues here, like, you know, the drone ordinances are difficult. We looked at a lot of different jurisdictions drone ordinances, and it's, it, it, part of the problem is you're kind of hamstrung by the federal rules, and some of these could be charged as other offenses that already exist in your code, perhaps. And I think what you're gonna really find, as council member, member Bremner pointed out, is that people like him are gonna have no issues. You're gonna only have the egregious cases where there's a drone that goes over the backyard of somebody's house six days in a row, and they won't stop, and you find out who it is somehow, they get the ticket. Or somebody, you know, smashes a drone into a car or drops it out of the sky out of the, you know, ma- main street, and they're gonna get the ticket. It's gonna, you know, be used probably in situations where it's pretty egregious, and you actually are gonna find the person. That is the kind of thing you're gonna probably want to spend a lot of time monitoring until you get a complaint or something, something pretty clear happens. These are good points.
Chandler?
Yeah, I had an incidence where we had a drone issue when I was living and selling a home in New Mexico. We had our home for sale and someone wanted to buy it and was flying their drone all around it and taking photographs. That said, how does this, how does, what is presented here squaring with Vale, Breckenridge, I believe Aspen also has a drone ordinance and also Boulder. If this is just real similar to what they've got in place as just a, you know, if we, I know this is going to be really hard to enforce, maybe impossible to enforce, but if we don't have anything, we can't enforce it either. So I think we have to have some, some restrictions in place so that when that one or two people come along that we have something that we can refer to. The other thing that I'm concerned with is Manitou Springs is a health and wellness community, and I, I know so many citizens want to move even, even further in that direction of having a very walkable, very healthy community and. And I just see drones as something that um, I do, I do see they're going to get easier and cheaper to own. And I think that we do have to look at the potential for there being problems in a, in a, in a, you know, kind of a resort community like man, small resort community like Manitou. That as Council Wallbrook says, isn't a box canyon.
I believe Mr. Parker needs to leave for another meeting here, so we, I think we need to make some, give ourselves some quick direction here. Um, it sounds like we have a few reservations as to what we really want to do with this ordinance. So maybe we should uh, let him uh, leave and we can continue to discuss the, the subject. Um, we can put it off to another time and get some feedback from the public. I guess for my two cents, uh, I think the ordinance we have is, is maybe a starting place. Uh, I can certainly sympathize with uh, Mr. Shade's comments like how do we enforce this? Um, on the other hand, if, if we have something in place, it does give our, our police and uh, fire department some, some reach is to be able to. To, to respond to cases where they need to do so. So. Anyone in council have a, have a great proposal here? Counselor Wolf?
Um, I wanted to see, it depends if there's support for this. Uh, I don't want Jeff to do work if other people don't like the idea. But I'd like to see if there's a way that we can, that Jeff could find some language that talks about um. Persistent, ongoing persistent sound or something at X decibels for more than X amount of time. Or I don't know if that's crazy, um, but that seems to be the annoyance of drones more so than the um. I haven't heard a lot of people complaining about, you know, invasion of privacy necessarily, but it's. It's that constant sound, especially when there's more than one, because sometimes people like to do drones with their friends. Um, so I just didn't know if there was, if, if the rest of council likes that to be part of the ordinance, then maybe we could ask Jeff and Elizabeth to see if they could. Come up with some language. I, I wouldn't even want to take a stab at something like that, but it's difficult. But only if other people like the idea. If overall you all don't want it, then I don't want him to waste his time.
That seems to me to be even harder to enforce.
Well, I don't want to make decisions based on how hard it is to enforce. It's really hard to figure out who murdered somebody, but we still have laws against murder. So I'm not too hung up on the enforcement piece. I want to focus on what kind of laws do we think would make sense? Maybe we'll only win one out of every 2,000 cases because it's hard to enforce. I don't know. But I think it's good to have the rules in place so people know what the rules are. Most people like to obey the rules. So um. That's why, I mean, I, I wouldn't want to, a lot of things are hard to enforce, uh, but we still have laws about them. So I wouldn't want to have that be a reason, but I, but more like uh, just. If there's consensus or not, or maybe that's something that you want to discuss another time so that we don't make Jeff late for this next meeting.
Well, Ellie's still here to, to, to work at the end, so no problem.
I can say and take whatever you have to say back to Jeff as well.
Good, thank you. Okay, so Mr. Parker, feel freely when you need to and we'll rely on Elizabeth. Uh, Council Woolbrook, uh, you've raised your hand. You're recognized.
Thank you. I just have one comment is that I, I don't want to get too hung up on enforcement either because I think a lot of it is just. Sharing the information with the public and now that we have a public information and engagement officer, these things are much easier for us to share and can be shared often. Um, so it's easier. We have multiple platforms to share what the drone rules would be. Um, most of the people in my neighborhood, once they realize that there are already some rules on the books and, you know, they, they've been really cooperative about it. Um, so I agree that we can't get too hung up on enforcement in this particular case. But what we can get hung up on is really always reminding residents what the rules are. Um, so that they're constantly aware of it. And if they're aware of it, then when we do enforce, we can say, we've told you in five different platforms and two times this week not to do this. And I think that would probably be in this particular case, I hope I don't regret saying this, but I think that would, would probably be effective enough.
I'm going to leave you in the good hands of Ellie. I do need to go to my other meeting now.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Mr. Parker.
Have a good night.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I'm just, I think that the um, ordinance is uh, quite well written. We needs very little in terms of um. Uh, finessing if anything, and I would like to see it come back next week um, for first reading.
Thank you. Can I get a sense from council is to, are, are we ready to bring this back for first reading? I, I think I'd be okay with it the way it is on first reading. It may not be perfect, but I think it's a start. There's a lot of little implementation details that uh, you know, we'll just have to work through those if they become problems. So um, maybe could I, could I ask for a show of hands as to who thinks this would be? Uh, who could support this coming back as written to council next week? My last show of hands. Five, so we, we, okay, we have six. Okay, thank you. And I presume Counselor Bremner, you're opposed? Or, okay, so we'll register you as a N A Steve. Okay. All right, so we have uh, six to one to bring this forward to council as written next week. So I think that'll be our direction. Uh, Elizabeth, I'd like to give you the opportunity to make a comment if you feel there's anything you need to say.
Oh, thank you. Um, and I'm, yeah, bring forward to comment, but if you do have any other questions, I'm happy to look into it.
Okay, okay, great. Well, thank you. Thank, thanks for uh, coming in and supporting the meeting. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, let's go ahead and, and move on to the next item. That's a. This, the discussion of Columbus Day Indigenous Peoples' Day, and that's going to be presented by Alex, our Public Information Officer. And I, I think probably all remember right after last Columbus Day, we had uh, a few citizens contact us asking that we consider changing the name of Columbus Day. Or something like that. Um, Alex, there you are. You've got the floor.
All right, Judy, do I uh, share my screen?
Yes. Unless you want me to run it for you.
I'm just fine doing it. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
All right, uh, Mr. Mayor, City Council, good to see you all. I hope you're doing well. Um, for everyone watching who doesn't know me, my name's Alex Trefry. I'm the Public Information Officer for the City of Manitou Springs. And I'm just going to be giving some high level information um, regarding the Columbus Day discussion. So let's start. So um, the purpose of this, uh, or of my part in this is mainly to provide high level background regarding this discussion. Um, about whether city council would like to take action on a resolution regarding Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day, a different holiday in its place. Or some other option that um, some of you might think of. So real quick, just some quick background about um. Indigenous peoples in this area. Um, the area currently known as the City of Manitou Springs was of course first described, um, discovered by indigenous tribes. Um, commonly referred to as the Uta Rapa Ho and Cheyenne tribes. So the picture that you can see right there, um, those are artifacts from the tribes that were found in Garden of the Gods by the City of Colorado Springs is um. City archaeologist, um, they're dated to be approximately 3,000 years old. So that's just to show that there, um, in this area, there was um, Native American activity. Um, in regards to Columbus Day, um, as many of you know, it's the second Monday in October. It was first proclaimed a federal holiday by President Roosevelt in 1937. Um, to commemorate the landing of Columbus in the Americas in 1492. Um, it's very important to note that Columbus never did step foot in the to be United States. Um, but he did reach Cuba, the Bahamas and Hispaniola, which is um, the island that the Dominican Republic and Haiti share. Um, controversy regarding Columbus Day mainly stems from the slave trading that he partook in. And um, the resulting treatment of indigenous populations after um, he stepped foot in um, the regions that he um. Sailed to. Um, over 160 cities and universities have recognized Indigenous Peoples' Day. Mainly, they'll go one of two routes of either replacing Columbus Day with it or running the two dates concurrently. Um, the state of Colorado took a different aspect um, with Francis, Francis Xavier Cabrini Day in 2020. With a House Bill 20 dash 1031. Um, supporters of Columbus Day mainly say, um, this is from the National Italian American Foundation, which I would say is the largest collective of um. Supporters for Columbus Day and um, they stated that it became a source of dignity and self-worth for Italian Americans. And more broadly Catholics in the light of discrimination that these groups were facing. And on the other hand, supporters of replacing Columbus Day, uh, this comes from Colorado Indigenous Peoples' Day Organization. Say that it starts a deeper conversation with the state of Colorado and the United States of America. About telling the truth about our history and how to address the effects this history has in our current moment. So moving forward, um, I believe that there's three ways that city council can approach this holiday. Um, firstly, you could do nothing and continue to observe Columbus Day. You could replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day or some other holiday per a resolution. Or per a resolution proclaim Indigenous Peoples' Day or some other holiday that does not replace Columbus Day. Therefore, celebrating both of the holidays concurrently. Um, staff doesn't have a recommendation on um, in the aspect of a holiday. But rather that if city council does proclaim a holiday other than Columbus Day, that they amend the employee handbook as well in the interest of. Being uniform. So with that, I could um, bring questions and if it's all right, I'll stop sharing my screen so we can all see each other.
Thank you, Alex. Well, council, do we have questions for Alex? More comments? Mayor Protem?
Sure, thanks, Alex. Um, if, if it were replaced, if Columbus Day were replaced, it would, the reason it needs to be in the um. The handbook is strictly to make it still a holiday. Is that the purpose?
It would, it would be for uniformity. In the employee handbook, it states that um, out of the holidays that we celebrate, Columbus Day is one of them.
Okay, so I, I would just say that I would be interested in, at a minimum, well. The, the Indigenous Peoples' Day just seems to be much more apropos for our city. Um, given that it wasn't, Columbus Day wasn't declared until 1937. Um, cultures evolve and um. I, I just think again, indigenous people is much more apropos for, for Manitou Springs. Given that historically, my experience is that Columbus Day was a way to look at history. And Indigenous People's Day is more pertinent to us. So that's kind of where I am. Thanks.
Counselor Chandler was next and then we'll go to Counselor Bremner after that. Counselor Chandler?
I don't have any questions for you, Alex, but thank you for a really good presentation and the, and giving us some history behind it. Um, I feel very strongly about replacing Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. And re- um, revising the employee handbook um, to reflect that. Uh, that change in the, the holiday and I absolutely agree with Mayor Protem Fortune that. That is a much more appropriate holiday um, for our particular community. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bremner was next, but it looks like he's on a cell phone. Counselor Bremner? He may have lost connection.
Yeah.
Counsel. Okay, I think he's trying to work the problem. Does anyone else have a comment at the moment? Okay, Counselor Wolf, please.
I agree with Judith and I'm having really weird internet activity today, tonight. It, it's acting like we're back to the dial-up days. So maybe Steve got kicked off.
Okay, possibly. Okay, like Counselor Bremner, can you? Do you want to speak? Can you speak?
Yeah.
Looked like maybe you were having, looked like you're having technical difficulties there, but uh.
Yeah, I had a phone call coming in and it messed up my audio, so.
Okay.
Um, yeah, am I on the floor now?
Yeah, you have the floor now, yeah.
Okay, yeah, um. I'm, I'm in agreement with uh, changing the day from Columbus Day. I don't think it's appropriate in this day and age to celebrate. Uh, Columbus, I've read quite a bit of its history and it's not very endearing. I uh, and I, I don't favor singly not one person. I prefer to make it more general. So if it was Indigenous Peoples' Day, that'd be fine. Or Ute, uh, Indian tribe or, or something, or one of the tribes that's actually uh, was in Manitou Springs would be appropriate as well. But indigenous people is also good.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Bremner. Counselor Shada, what's your thoughts?
I actually like um, Steve's idea. I think we ought to name it something about the indigenous people that were actually lived here. We're going to actually going to do something local. I thought, I think we ought to showcase those people. Then just making it some kind of generic kind of thing that, what does that mean to, you know, any, any, anybody in a sense? Whereas if we're talking about, you know, a holiday that overlaps our community, I think we have a pretty good idea of what specific. Um, indigenous people were here and they have a name and I think we ought to use that name.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Shada. Uh, Counselor Woolbrook? What are your thoughts?
I'd be ready to move um, this over. Is it a, is it a resolution or is it a first reading or is it just move over?
It's just a discussion really. We, we're not, uh, we're just kind of seeing where we, what, what our thoughts are on this. We don't really have to make a decision tonight. We just kind of wanted, we were, we're asked by a number of citizens to consider changing it. So I think it's mainly a try to get a sense of what we feel like we should want, what we want to do.
Yeah, I mean, I'm in support of, of uh, the direction we're moving in for sure.
Okay, great. Thank you, Counselor Woolbrook. And for, for my two cents, I've um. I'm just always fascinated by the American Indians. Uh, they, they still danced here when I was a little kid and I just thought it was a great tradition and a wonderful heritage. And, and I think we've uh, kind of lost, lost that. So I think if we can bring something back respectful, I think would be huge. It would be a, a great tie back to our, our legacy and help identify us as uh, as a, help to identify the uniqueness in Manitou. So I'd be in favor of uh, moving along the lines of having an Indigenous uh, Peoples' Day, something like that. So it looks like we have fairly broad support for that. Um, I, I guess the next step is to decide what we really want to call it. And uh, how much uh, indigenous is pretty, is a pretty big umbrella. That might be a good way to do it and then we'll see how it goes from there. Other comments? Okay, we could um, we could ask for some public feedback if we.
Hmm, we don't need to do it. Okay.
I know.
I, John, I just have staff come back with a proposed resolution, or Denise was going to say something, sorry.
Denise, okay.
I was going to say we can bring this back as a resolution next week and then you can ask for public input at that point. That allows them to, that's when public comment can be made and then go from there.
Okay, that sounds agreeable. If there's no objection, that's what we'll do. Okay, it looks like there's no objection. Okay, Denise, make it so. Great. Okay, thank you.
Good job, Alex.
Yes, Alex, thanks. Good job. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Okay, learn more about Columbus Day than I ever knew previously. Good. Um, we have one more discussion item tonight. Does, does anybody want to take a break before we get into that? It's uh, it's just about 10 after 7.
Five minutes.
Five minutes, okay. Let's uh, let's plan on coming back at 7:15 then. Okay, thanks. Five minutes, okay. Let's, let's plan on coming back at 7:15 then. Okay, thanks. Okay. Looks like we have everybody back, so let's go ahead and get started again. The next item is a 60-day update from the Preserve and Renew Our Carnegie Library Task Force. We're going to start off by hearing from Christine from the Planning Department. So Judy, if you could bring Christine over, please?
Christina, you went and Rob over too, or just you?
Um, I think Rob and Mary. Mary's going to be presenting also, answering questions.
Great, thank you.
Evening.
Good evening. All right, looks like we have everybody. Denise, did you have a comment before we started?
I just wanted to mention last week, I mentioned that we would not be able to make this happen this week due to the agenda was already full, but some things moved around. So we were able to go ahead and get the library to do their presentation this week. So that's why it was put on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, thanks for arranging that. Good. Christine, you have the floor.
All right. Hi, how are you all doing tonight? My name is Christine Lowenberg, Planning Director for the City of Manitou Springs. Tonight marks, today marks roughly 60 days since the last formal update to council regarding the Carnegie Library building. In October, this body asked for scheduled updates regarding the status of fundraising and moving forward on design. As you all know, the last 60 days have been marked by some major steps to lay that foundation for the coming years, including the passage of Resolution 3620, thank you, preparations and submissions for the match grant application, and other details that are noted in the attached report. In the packet, in the council packet tonight, is the report that was prepared by the Preserve and Renew Our Carnegie Library Task Force. Mary and Rob, as I mentioned a moment ago, they are joining us tonight to represent the task force and have a couple of things to say and fulfilled some questions and hopefully make this a great conversation. Because we've been before you on a number of very specific issues over the last month, tonight is really intended on our part to be more conversational for the next 20 minutes. I did not bring a formal presentation. We're hoping this will be broad-reaching and answer as many questions or thoughts or concerns as, as council has. With that, Mary, on behalf of the task force, would, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Graham and members of the city council, as Christine mentioned, we're, we appreciate the opportunity to answer any questions you might have. But I want to start by apologizing. I noticed that I, I put the wrong date at the top of the report. So you'd think by February, I'd know enough to use 2021, but it is 2020, 21, not 2020. So mostly we're here to answer questions. A couple of things I'll highlight. One is that the accomplishments in the report represent the accomplishments of the collaborative team, what we like to affectionately call our, our three-legged stool. So it's not just the task force. And we, like Christine, has, Christine has mentioned, think there's been significant progress in the last couple of months. We've had the number of members of the community who are interested in the library project has continued to grow as evidenced by the increasing number of people on the task force mailing list and the volunteer and recruitment is ongoing. Our next big steps are really to hire an architect to have a tentative plan and tentative cost estimate to work from for both community outreach and fundraising to complete a public relations plan that's already been started and already there's been collaboration started with the Manitou Springs Public Relations Officer. We need to come up with a big picture fundraising plan. And also, part of that will be getting notification of the match, results of the match proposal that was submitted in January, because we need an idea of how much money we'll have as matching grants, at least for the first year. And then with the accomplishments of the last 60 days, I think we're now in a position, we, the task force, believe we're now in a position soon to set some definitive milestones. And we should be able to report on those at our next 60-day update. Because as you may recall, we're asked to come back every 60 days with an update. But with that, I'll just pause and let people answer, ask questions, and then we are collectively here to answer them, so.
Mayor Protem?
Sure. I was excited to see that you've, PPLD Foundation Director is going to work with your group now. And I was wondering if you could just talk a little bit about what, what all she's able to bring to the table.
Yeah, I'll let Rob speak to that.
We met with her. She's retired. She, from the PPLD Foundation. Recently retired, obviously has a great love of libraries. And she approached one of our task force members, letting them know how much she appreciates our particular Carnegie library and the efforts that we as a task force in the community and the city are doing. Can she be of help? And so we had an initial meeting with her and she will be working with us on a volunteer basis to help with writing or searching for and having to go ahead and apply for grants in large foundations. That's her experience over the years is in that area. So she has come on board in terms of agreeing to work with us. And so we are just as excited as you are that we will have her expertise and support as we move forward.
Thanks.
Julie, and then we'll go to Denise. Julie?
Have you folks already started investigating which foundations might be most inclined to support your effort?
Yes, definitely. Go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, we have, as a subcommittee, we have three subcommittees. One of them is the Grant Writing and Fundraising Subcommittee. And we, through our facilitator for that subcommittee, she has been accumulating, as well as other members of that subcommittee, possible grant avenues and opportunities, actual grants, actual foundations. So we have over the last month at least, have been looking, I just did a count of what we've been looking at, and we're probably about 80 different grants and foundations. Now, we're looking at those in terms of targeting them for the different aspects of our fundraising, in terms of what they require for us to even apply, their target dates for us to do so. And so what we're doing is, out of the 80 that we've done so far, we're pulling that down. We're probably down to about half of those that may be viable. And we are, we just received from our facilitator another long list of other possible grants that people are acquiring. Bringing on the consultant will also help us in that regard too, as well as channel us in those areas that we are researching on our own. So yes, we have a spreadsheet. We have details in regards to different aspects of the different grants, of what, again, in how we target those grants. So we have started that and we will continue to do that as well. Plus, we have city staff who's been willing to work with us as well in terms of looking for appropriate types of grants. And they've been coming to our subcommittee meetings.
I would, I'd add to that, this is Christine, Councilor Wolf. I would add to that also, you know, my expectation is that the work that we're doing between staff and volunteers is that we're really putting together an 18 to 24-month grant cycle. So that we'll put these together, we'll know who we're targeting, what the submission dates are, what our potentials are. And then we'll have a really good schedule to kick off this summer to start applying for grants.
I believe Denise, Denise had her hand up first, so I'll go to Denise and then Councilor Chandler.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I know you guys are focused about getting the word out and your mailing list, which is growing every day. If somebody wants to get on your mailing list, how do they get on that? Just so that we can make sure that the public knows that and they know how to get tickets, so that they can get their monthly updates from you.
Yes, um, we put, we have a blurb under the volunteer opportunities and the bike speed bulletin. It's in there, I would say every week, but I, I know that they rotate them out. But we have an ongoing established panel through that. When we are, come to meetings such as this or newspaper articles that are presented, we've been getting, we've been asking that our contact information be publicized. So we have probably in the last couple of weeks added five more people. We're well over 50 people now. And so, and also talking from what Mary said, we have now established a channel of communication with Alex, the Public Information Officer. We're working on a coordinated community outreach through our community outreach subcommittee, which would be another way of getting the word out of what, who we are and what we're doing in cooperation with the city and PPLD.
I believe you were next?
Were you talking to be?
Yeah, you, I believe you'd raised your hand, Judith.
Yeah, I didn't hear.
Denise was ahead of you, so.
Well, Administrator Howe asked my question, so thank you for that. So I will just say that, I, I just want to tell you that I'm very impressed, not only with, with the presentation, but how much, how popular this is becoming and the, the number of people that are, that are wanting to join. I was particularly grateful for the attachment to the task force to-do list and how you broke that out into tasks and subtasks and also detailed what your subcommittees are doing. So again, I just wanted to thank you for the presentation and also kudos to a lot of hard work and, and thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to hear.
Other comments from council members? Councilor Wilbrook?
Thanks. I, I just wanted to respond to an email from Rob Danen. And Rob, I'm so sorry I haven't had a chance to respond to you yet. It's been a crazy week. But one of the things that Rob emailed me about was how to do outreach in my ward. And I do have some suggestions for you that I'd like to share tonight, because I think this is an appropriate time to share those. I can give you a little history about some outreach that was done previously. When we started the residential parking program, we weren't the first neighborhood that went with that. We were kind of one of the last major neighborhoods to do that. And we were kind of really unsure about whether or not we wanted to do that and how it would work out. And I can tell you that as the, as the RPP manager for that, for this RPP at that time, I knocked on every door in this RPP area. So every street, every door. And I learned a whole lot about my neighborhood when I did that, because I didn't realize, for example, that on DuClow, the houses you see on DuClow are not all of the residences that are there. Almost every one of those houses has multiple cottages behind it. And I'd already lived here for 10-plus years and I was like, what? I just would walk back behind a house and then I'd be like, oh my God, there's another cottage and another cottage. The thing that I would recommend, and I didn't unfortunately have a good look at your task list, so forgive me if this is on it, you have a great committee forming. I think you need to go knock on doors, especially if you're standing at the library and you can see residences from that library area. That would be a great place to start. You asked me where to start. I think you need to knock on the door and you need to come with real information and real plans, not platitudes and not conceptual things. You need to talk about what it really means, okay? So what does it mean in terms of the footprint? What does it mean in terms of the vegetation? What does it mean in terms of the parking? What does it mean in terms of the traffic? And if you can't answer the questions, that's okay. You can go back again. You're fortunate to have a committee to do that. And I think that if you make this effort in this ward especially, I mean, there's so many kids on DuClow now that play in the library. And I mean, I use the library every day in terms of the grounds, the park. And I mean, I've seen some amazing snow fortresses that, you know, I mean, I can only imagine how much fun that was to be there and to be part of that snowball fight with a fort built out of snow. So you're going to encounter a lot of parents. Some are permanent residents here, some are tenants who also might be permanent residents. But they really think, and you're asking about outreach, that's what you really have to do. And I think it'll pay off for you in spades, because I think there won't be surprises and gotchas by the time this moves a little further. Neighbors won't be like, I've never heard of this, what? They will have heard about it and they'll have had an honest conversation with you in person and your community and your committee members about where this is going. I also think you really ought to have a conversation with the school. And I'm not sure how to do that, but I'm sure Elizabeth could help you with that. And here's why I mention it. I get emails all the time from parents, not all of whom live in Manitou, because remember, we have a large component of choice students in Manitou. And so the elementary school has tons of people that drive in every morning. We have over, I would say it's at 50%, if not a little above 50%. And I get emails all the time saying, hey, can you get rid of this RPP thing, this residential parking? Because it's crazy in the morning and it's crazy in the afternoon. And I got ticketed for just trying to pick my kid up from school and it seems like we could do a better job. And this is something that Roy hears about as well and Kevin from Parking as well. And I really think that, you know, those people really need to have some outreach from your committee, whether it's their, and I don't know what they call it, if it's the PTA or, I mean, there's probably an acronym that I'm getting wrong there. But how are we going to manage traffic? What, what are these changes going to do to the traffic pattern in that area? This was a big concern when match was being discussed, because there was like this crazy memo that went out that said, oh, don't worry about it. We've got it all taken care of. But I mean, we're not that far along, so we don't have it all taken care of. So I would definitely suggest your committee walking, especially the street of DuClow, Pawnee. I mean, if you're standing in the library and you can see that, those are the doors you should knock on. These neighbors are going to be reasonable with you and if they're not, I know you can win them over with, you know, answering their questions honestly and telling them what's going to happen. I mean, I think this is what needs to happen. You're lucky, because, you know, it's not just one of you, it's a lot of you. And I think you can make a big difference in how this project develops and the acceptance of this project as it moves along. And I also think it can help you understand what the best need is in that neighborhood. And I know a library is a community need and I get all that and it's not lost on me and I agree with it 100%. But you, you're, you're coming into a really dense area and it is a park. And we have to sort of start working on balancing those needs. And the people that really would appreciate seeing you are those people. And then helping them get themselves into the greater community discussion about this. So I appreciate your patience on letting me answer that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Wolf?
Yeah, that was really interesting what Susan had to say and it made me think, you know, this is just a minor little thing, but maybe it makes sense to have free parking at the lot at the bottom of Pawnee there. You know, when kids are being dropped off in the mornings and during typical end-of-school time, you know, for an hour or so, you don't have to prove that you're really, you know, pulling into the lot for purposes of picking up your kid. I mean, we don't want people to have to show IDs and... of picking up your kid. I mean, we don't want people to have to show IDs and stuff, but I wonder if there's a way we could make that, that's the closest parking lot I can think of that would have enough space, because I'm assuming the one across from the library behind the school is used exclusively by the school employees. So that might help alleviate some of the RPP issue. I know that's just one little thing, but it might it might help for folks who, whose doors we're not knocking on because they're driving into town to try and help support our school system by putting their kids there, which is great. So maybe we could give them some free parking. Or get a little school, get a little school tag on your windshield or something, you know, something.
Council members have questions, comments, suggestions? Okay, thank you. I guess your, your discussion was pretty lucid here. I, I think the materials that you provided for us to have in the packet, that was pretty helpful also. Yeah, I was pleased to see those. A couple comments on those. I know you kinda, you lost stride there a little bit, because we had some indecision as to to how to go forward with the library, but I guess in going in the future, if you could maybe give us a little bit of an idea of what your near-term goals might be, I think that would help, help us understand your immediate problems. Not that we're necessarily gonna be able to help, but maybe we can. It would be good for us to be aware of the challenges you're facing, because we, those are kind of a shared set of challenges. Also, if you have critical milestones or timelines, I think that would be helpful too, that would be a decent means of communication and probably would improve the dialogue between us. So, just a couple thoughts, I mean, but those are some things I'm sensitive to, or you know, particularly like other council members may have, have different predilections, so that would be fine. Great. Christine, Rob, Mary, do you have additional comments? Rob, it looks like you do.
Just on what you had said, Mayor, and dovetailing off of what Mary said during her presentation is that from this point forward, now that we are on a trajectory of specific steps in which to move forward, I do believe you will see, certainly with, by the next sixty days when we come to see you, certainly at that point, we will have more concrete benchmarks in which to share with you, both in written form in our report, and as well as any correspondence or discussion you would like to have.
Good, great, thank you. Christine?
Yes, I'll just tack on to that. So since a week ago when we were here and tonight, I've been working rapidly on a number of updating proposed schedules and where we're gonna be at different points this year. We're working really hard, I'm working really hard on compressing the, the first two months of the schedule that all of you saw that would be going out as an RFP process. Of course, a lot of that's subject to final negotiations, but when we get back here with you guys in sixty days, we're gonna have some really robust calendar dates and deliverables, what we expect to see at that time. We should also have a pretty, you know, we should be, I'm not sure if we'll be ready to present it, but we'll be pretty darn close to more of a strategic grant application schedule and also preparing, we're preparing our components for the Colorado Common Grant Application, that's super important as a part of that capital campaign. You know, I think that it's always important to remember for all of us, it's hard to get ahead of ourselves, but I do this all the time, but a capital campaign is kind of like an iceberg, right? So until you, there's so much beneath the surface that you don't even see. And when it does become visible, there's already been so much that's formed underneath the surface. So we're gonna be working really hard on that. We've already laid some good foundation there, and so I think next time you'll be pleased with what we bring back to you.
Great, thank you very much. Mary, did you have any comments?
I'll just say thank you for the opportunity to answer questions and thank you for the feedback, it's very helpful.
Great.
Appreciate it.
Council, last call, if you've got any more, anything to say, this'll be it. Okay, all right, great. Christine, Rob, Mary, thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Well, okay, thank you, Council. We've completed all our discussion items now, we're at the point where we receive or act on council correspondence, so does anyone have anything? Mayor Pretten?
Just quickly, I had a call this morning from a resident whose basement had been flooded twice this week. And I just wanna really give kudos to Roy and Public Works and Denise for spending all day, the better part of the day, really working, hopefully working through that issue, but at least improving the situation for the residents there, so thanks.
Thank you. Kelsman Bremner, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, I, last night I spoke before the Kiwanis Club about legal encampments and where we are with that. I presented a slideshow with some pictures of illegal camps, and I showed a video. And it was well-received. And also, I had some correspondence regarding the cog and their plans to run trains every forty minutes. And so I'm curious if they're gonna do that, we need to have some kind of a baseline. What did they have before as far as passenger ridership, and what did they propose to do when they reopen? Because there's gonna be quite a delta. Because if they run trains every forty minutes and they ran them every hour and fifteen minutes before, and we don't know how much more capacity each train car has than it had before, we're looking at potentially close to double the amount of ridership, which means incredible amount of traffic on Rexton Avenue. So we need to find out exactly what's going on. So I, I'm just, I'm really looking forward to, you know, what's gonna come out of that, so. Looks like Denise hasn't.
Yeah, I believe Denise wants to respond to that, Steve.
I will tell you, that is, will be all presented as the whole package in March ninth during the work session, TMMP, Roy's working on that, I saw a preliminary presentation yesterday, I think we had thirty-six slides, thirty-five slides, I can't remember. But he's pulling all of the data together, so it's in one place. He'll be presenting all of that as we're getting those final numbers, so that will be coming very quickly to you.
Okay.
With all the numbers. Right, anything you wanted to add with that?
No, it's a lot, so, yeah, we'll, and I'll, thanks for bringing that up, we are looking at the forty-minute change and the new, new trains versus old trains, et cetera.
Julie, did you? I think Julie was next.
This is a question for Roy. Roy, can you sue us for overtime?
No, ma'am. I'm on salary and there is no overtime.
Well, I heard tonight that being on salary isn't necessarily protecting us from all these assignments we're giving you. Are you high enough that you can't sue us on salary?
Yes, ma'am.
That's a good thing, because you've got a lot of things on your to-do list.
I do, and Denise takes care of me, makes sure that I get the time off that I need, so we're good. Thank you, though.
Councilor Chandler? Judith?
So two things. The first is regarding the minutes of the first meetings. I wanna request that those meeting minutes just come into our council inbox. Not that they're not easy to find, but sometimes it's an afterthought for me to remind myself to go, to go read them. And so I just wanna make that request, if that could, could happen. With regards to the minute, the first minutes from the meeting on the fourth of February, Dole brought up an issue, or an issue was discussed about the micro litter on the incline they're concerned about with all the wristbands. And I would like to know how much micro litter we're talking about, how it's being taken care of, and if there's another alternative to the paper wristband we could consider. So that's my first question, and then I have a follow-up question.
So the
Denise or Roy?
So the first question, yes, we can get you the minutes, we can send that out to council, that shouldn't be hard, I we normally post those, it'd be easy just to forward on to council as well, so that's easy. Number two is the, the bands, and so we were, we were talking about whether they're more permanent type bands versus the paper, because the paper ones are the problem and the little pull-off strips. But the other thing is they don't have a trash can down there, so we were also gonna put a trash can, so when they do pull off the strips, they put it right in the trash can, because that's, so they have a plastic bag, but I think something there that, you know, is a trash can would be more visible and they would think about it. Plus having them, remind them. So I don't have data, actual the problem up the incline itself, but we, we have asked them if they can take a look and we can find another solution. If that's just not gonna work, whether it's more permanent bands, that could be something people save. Or even some kind of lanyard-type thing where they, they get those for a year or something else, we're trying to think of some ideas.
Is it, is it a large amount of, I mean, can you kind of quantify that? How much is it?
I don't think, not a lot, but it's, you know, it's enough, any pollution's not good if we can put it where it needs to go. It's more of those little strips, you know, they have like a glue or something, you unstrip, you put it around your wrist, and those little strips kind of fly away. So we just need to have them be more proactive in reminding people and have a trash can up there, so we asked them to do that. And then we'll, the next meeting, we'll ask how it's going and keep monitoring that.
Thank you. Update on that, that'd be great, I appreciate it, or maybe just in the minutes, and then I can read them. Thanks. My second, my second issue or comment is, and I really think this is a good time to bring it up, I've wanted to bring it up a number of times before. But now that we have a much more solid staff, city staff, and the fact that it looks like our COVID numbers are improving, I think it's, this is the time this year to consider the creation of a code of ethics for all Manitou Springs City employees, which would give us standards of business conduct. And I think that's, I just wanna put that out there, I really think that that this has been a priority for some time, and of course, COVID was not the time to bring this up, but I'd like to see us make that a priority, and I, and I would like to put that as a discussion item on on a, on a work session. Sooner versus later, but at, at an appropriate time, so we can start discussion on that. And that's all I have, thank you.
And I noticed during Councilor Chandler's first comment, both Councilors Bremner and Wolf wanted to respond, apparently, I believe Steve was first, so we'll hear from Steve and then from Julie. Steve, do you still have comments?
Yeah, regarding the wristbands, I had correspondence with Jill Suarez about that, she asked, why do, why do they have wristbands? And I started thinking, why do we have wristbands? I mean, I think we could probably do away with the wristbands, because I don't think there's any enforcement anywhere. I remember once I was up at the incline bale and I saw somebody who didn't have a wristband on. So I asked him, where's your wristband? And he started to get kind of flippant with me, he said, why, what authority do you have to ask me if I have a wristband? And I said, well, I'm just observing that everybody has a wristband, but I don't see you have a wristband. Well, he pulled his wristband out of his pocket, and he showed it to me. But I don't know, there's really, I mean, I'm on city council, I guess I have some enforcement ability, but I don't think there's really any enforcement going on, there's nobody has authority to enforce it, so what's the point of having the wristbands? So I just throw that out there.
Good point.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wolf, you have comments?
Well, you know, it's interesting, Steve's comment, I am not knowledgeable on whether the wristbands are helpful for any cause or not, but I just wanted to say that I've been to places where you had to pay a little deposit for your wristband or for whatever it was, your little badge or something. And then you turn it in when you're done, and then they give you your three dollars back. So i-if it turns out that the wristbands actually do serve some purpose or encourage people to stay on track with, you know, making a reservation and not just pushing their way through the, you know, the stand there, then we could look at that as an alternative to pollution. I just wanted to put that out there for Roy, because it, you know, seems to hold time. Most people will not throw it away if they're gonna get their three dollars back.
That's, that's correct, and at recreation facilities, they'll do that. A lot of times, whether it's even a dollar, but they want their dollar back, so that could be helpful. One idea when we implemented that was to do a little peer pressure, you know, so if, if people that are obeying the rules, they wanna see other people wearing the band, so we were hoping that would be the case. Is it effective? It's a good question, I don't think we have, you know, any real data on that, but but generally, in, in facilities, you do want a method to know if they are allowed to be there. And, you know, so in recreation facilities, sometimes they would do a band as well, like if you go to Waterworld, so that people know that they're supposed to be there, so it's kind of to give that effect to that they're being watched to some degree. It's not a hundred percent, though. But, but the pollution is a, is a problem, and so we'll, we'll have to work on that and figure that out and hopefully have some answers by the, the next minutes, so we'll work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, anything to report?
Thanks, I just wanted to remind everybody about the blood drive on Thursday at ten AM to two. We still have some slots open, and if you can even drop by without an appointment, I can't guarantee you that you'll get in, but sometimes they have an extra person. We, I'm happy to say we're one of the most successful blood drives regionally, which says a lot about our community, and it doesn't surprise me at all. But I'll be sending an email out tomorrow to remind everybody again. Thank you.
Do you have anything? Okay, all right, and the only thing I had, it was a repeat of what Mayor Pretten Fortune had mentioned, I got a call from one of the people that had their basement flooded with sewage this week, I guess it was this morning, and it was late afternoon, by the time I talked to him, he was a little frustrated, but he had, he said he'd had good interaction with city staff and they were working on the problem. He called and left a message, so by the time I got back to him, he'd gone from being, you know, fairly anxious to where he was, he was, he felt there was light at the end of the tunnel, so my, kudos to Denise and, I think it was Russ and Jeff from the, from Public Works, so. And there's probably other people involved too, but, so pass the kudos along. That's all I've got, let's go on to the city administrator's report. Roy?
I have nothing else to report tonight, thank you.
But I guess you don't have anything.
I really don't have anything to report tonight either, thank you.
Okay, great. Well, this is a work session, so we don't really need a motion to adjourn. There's no objection, we'll call it a night. Good night, take care. Bye-bye.